Is Wednesday, August 9th, 2023, and this is the August regular board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Ettinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore. Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Anthony Zanobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
And Sue, can you verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Just as we get started tonight, I want to welcome Colin Ziegler, who's our new AV operator, who's joining us at the station in the back of the boardroom. He's going into his senior year at South this year, so we'll have him for this school year, and you can blame all AV problems on me. He's perfect. So, welcome, Colin. It's good to have you here. Dr. Seibert, do we have a few bright lights and recognitions tonight?
Yes, we have definitely one bright light and then several recognitions. This is an E-Achieve Spotlight written by one of our incoming freshmen, and I'll read it. It's a very cool story. My name is Marilyn McCoy Sprung. I started at E-Achieve in sixth grade after the COVID lockdown. This next school year, I will be going into ninth grade. I really enjoyed my middle school years in E-Achieve. I have met some wonderful people who have become my friends, and the teachers are amazing. As a competitive figure skater, having the flexibility to work at my own pace and watch the recorded live lessons has given me the opportunity to go to the rink and train later in the morning and early in the afternoon. I complete, I compete, excuse me, in the disciplines of solo dance and freestyle. I've qualified for the U.S. Figure Skating Solo Ice Dance Nationals for the past two years and have qualified for my third Nationals this September in Chicago. Also, I recently qualified and competed at the Excel National Final and Festival in Austin, Texas. I've been able to travel all over the United States during the school year because I'm able to bring my computer with me so I can still get my schoolwork done while on the road. Overall, E-Achieve has had a huge positive impact on my education and my skating. So I just thought that was something really special, and it just shows, in a district of our size, the amount of different opportunities that we have for children and families. They really do make a difference. So, we wish certainly Marilyn all the best in her big-time skating efforts.
Thank you. And some recognitions? Or are we saving that for the superintendent report? Yep, no problem. All right. All right. We do not have student reports tonight, but we will look forward to the students coming back next September 5th, so when we have our next teaching and learning meeting. So we're now at this section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have seven speakers tonight. Each individual will be limited to three minutes, and we will signal you at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board and this, the school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker, and podium will be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight, I think, is Becky Gilligan.
And Gwen.
Okay, and Gwen.
So Gwen prepared a speech, but she's very nervous, so I'm going to read it for her. And then to mine, very short, it'll all be under three minutes. So, I am Gwen Gilligan, a student at Hayer Elementary, and I think having teachers quit is kind of strange. And having a larger group of kids is going to be hard for the teachers to manage. I am, and I'm worried that I won't get all of the help that I need because of the larger groups of kids. Although Gwen is not in one of the classes directly impacted by the dual-language teacher shortage, I read the letter, and I'm concerned about the plan. First, even when there's not, when, even in years where there has not been a mass exodus of teachers, the district is always short of teachers' aides, especially dual-language and special ed. The letter stated that there was going to be a dual-language aide assigned to the classrooms that have been combined. But how do you know that there will be enough aides to go around and for the entire year when you're already short? Does this mean that other classes will be without an aide? I really feel like you're putting all your eggs in one basket here. Second, dual-language is more than speaking fluent Spanish. I were, when I lived in Florida for six years, I had many coworkers who spoke fluent Spanish because of their parents, and they grew up speaking Spanish in the home. But nearly none of them could actually write in Spanish, and very few could also read in Spanish. Does the district have enough dual-language aides or plan to hire dual-language aides who can read and write in Spanish? I do know there are many that actually are native Spanish speakers from Spanish-speaking countries who obviously can, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. Teachers' aides are also not a substitute for a teacher. The aides will be able to assist with instruction but cannot teach since they're not teachers. Therefore, these classes will have an extra body for, you know, some child wrangling and some help, you know, with instruction, but the teacher, they'll still only have one teacher to instruct nearly twice the number of kids as normal. Dual-language is a commitment. They tell you that when you start signing your child up for the program. It's not something you just start and then stop. It's a completely different style of learning. If you think about it, you know, Gwen has learned how to read and write in two completely different languages. Monolingual.
Thirty seconds.
Students, they only have to learn how to read and write in one language. So to suggest that if the class sizes don't work, that they can just drop into a monolingual class, there's, that would be like sacrificing all of their hard work, plus they've been, you know, she's in fifth grade at Hayer, so she's been with the same group of kids for five, going on five years. She doesn't really know the monolingual kids. So it's asking them to leave their friends as well. So I just.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Is Gwen saying anything?
Well, this was hers, and I just read it. She's very nervous. You want to say something? No?
Okay, thank you. And next up is Renee Messerschmidt, who'll be followed by Monica Whaley.
There are two issues I'd like to speak about. The first is my concern about the lack of enough dual-language educators resulting in oversized classrooms. Though my children don't attend one of the dual-language schools, as a Hadfield parent, I do know something about negative impact oversized classrooms has on a teacher retention, student behavior, and the effects on learning. From what I've learned, the only families notified were families with kids in the affected classrooms. Why weren't all the families of Hawthorne, Bethesda, and Hayer notified? It's unwise to believe that this will only impact oversized classes, especially when you saw what happened at Hadfield last year. Let me remind you what happens when you do not provide an adequate amount of staff in a classroom. With more bodies, there is less personal attention given to each kid. Less attention impacts not only learning but behavior. A student acting out disrupts every student in that class. A teacher can only do so much in correcting that student's behavior or giving additional assistance to a student struggling while continuing to teach the 30-plus other students in the class. That teacher then must call for assistance. This may be the instructional coach or even the principal, but when, if, but what if there's more than one student that needs assistance? You pull another staff member from another class, thus impacting not only the oversized classes but all the classes. Correct this mistake and notify all the families of these schools so that they may make an informed decision on their child's education. In addition, you may need to notify the Banting families as well, as they may experience an influx of students transferring into their dual-language school. A bilingual instructional coach will help, but it is intermittent assistance at best. These teachers need aides in the classroom full-time. If not, you are sure to have a repeat of Hadfield where we had lost three teachers mid-year, an overwhelming amount of behavioral issues, and impacted learning in the classroom. It took you until January to finally admit Hadfield needed aides, and another three months before you could fill those positions. Unacceptable, especially when I and other Hadfield families express our concerns in September. Do your due diligence and hire additional aides for the oversized classrooms before the school year starts. My second concern regards the AC. I see window AC units have been installed at the old Woodyr campus. I am not opposed to this. I feel all schools in the district should have adequate AC. However, I question why now? When Woodyr principal asked for window AC units back in 2020, admin said no, stating safety concerns with the windows being accessible to outsiders and fuses blowing. So why are the window AC units now allowed to be when STEM is moving into the building? No upgrades were done to the windows, and what about the electrical upgrades? Doubtful, when the claim that there's not enough finances for there to be upgrades. So how is the safety concern any different for STEM students? Or was it because admin didn't want to provide window AC units to the Woodyr Public School students? Your blatant favoritism for charter in this district is appalling.
Your time is up.
Next up is Monica Whaley, followed by Paul Reese.
Two months ago, I asked you how you made district decisions considering all the disparities between you and the policyholders. I'll ask again. Do you have a district, a child in the district? If so, do they have special needs? Do they speak a second language? Do they qualify for free lunch? Are they members of the LGBTQ community? Are they a child of color? Do they experience bullying and harassment? Your decisions are based on political agenda and not for the betterment of students. You are more interested in destroying public education. A record number of teachers have left this district in the last two years. You have decimated your own administration, proof that your policies and practices were so indefensible that they could not, in good conscience, work here. Teachers, staff, and parents are disgusted by your deafness, ignorance, and indifference. The white, straight, privileged making up this board is blinding. You've done nothing to address the bullying and harassment of marginalized students, even when parents have offered programs that could rectify this problem. You've done nothing to improve federally mandated IEP minutes and services. Instead, you put your teachers under investigation to keep them quiet and not even communicate with the parents to let them know what happened. You have done nothing to provide equal programs for marginalized students, and now you're making it impossible to safely implement the successful dual-language program. This disruption caused by your policies and practices is putting the onus on parents to resolve your problem of oversized classrooms and lack of qualified teachers. You have deceived parents and teachers. You promised not to close schools, and yet you went ahead and closed them. You ignored progressive discipline and jumped instead to terminate an amazing dual-language teacher because you were embarrassed. There is no transparency between the district and the community it serves. There is no respect for parents who ask for change. When I speak to you, most of you won't even look at me, and some of you shake your head and sneer. I'm not asking the impossible. I'm only asking that your primary goal is to focus on the safety and well-being of all students.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Reese, followed by Tariq Akmut.
I've been coming here for a long time. I don't remember anyone promising not to close any schools around here. I want to talk about, last night I sat here for a couple hours listening about, to the teaching and learning, and they talked about Hadfield and how Hadfield's doing. And it was a positive report. That Hadfield's actually going up. You know how long I've been coming here and haven't heard that? For a long time, for 12 years, I haven't heard that. At Woodyr, I heard the same thing for every year for 12 years, what our problem, what our accomplishment was. We weren't going to have open enrollment in Woodyr because we were going to keep the class sizes small, because that was the solution, and that's the only thing we knew how to do. And it failed year after year. There was nothing that worked, nothing that changed, and failure continued at Woodyr. Now we have these combined schools, we have combined our resources, and they're succeeding. But some naysayers don't want to admit that that, or heaven forbid, it break the narrative. Now, when Diane came on to this board and she asked about North High School, I happened to listen to Mark Belling talk about something that happened in '08, because it's something from the year my daughter was born. Birth rates dropped. There was a housing boom that collapsed, the housing market collapsed, and birth rates dropped. There are no kids being born. You're starting to see that now in the high schools. Waukesha South last year did not field a football team for the first time in the history of South. Waukesha South also its swim team almost fell in half this year. It went from like 32 last year to 17 this year. The kids are disappearing. Sports are going to go away. These things are going to go away and disappear if we just put our heads up our hind end and pretend they're not happening. It may be time to look at closing a school or two in the upper grades. We've closed them in primary schools because there's no one there. Now, when we come to high schools, what are we going to do? Pretend it's not there so we can keep people employed and keep our classrooms empty? You know? What's the point of it? Because we are not going to be able to field sports teams. That's going to go away. I mean, it's not going to be competitive at all. So what are you going to do about it? It's got to be looked at, and it's got to be discussed honestly. And a long trip, people complain about, oh, my gosh, I have a long bus ride. I grew up in West Bend as a little kid. When they built West Bend, East and West, on the furthest east part of West Bend you could imagine. Imagine living on the west side.
Thirty seconds.
Of West Bend. I did, and I had my buddies', sisters who had to ride the bus for an hour or so to get to school, you know? When they're freshmen, then when they get their driver's license, hopefully they'd drive because you were on the bus for so long. Does their education suffer there? Are they so retarded there because they have a long bus ride? Because, I mean, you can't have long bus rides anyway. Anyways, thanks.
Thank you. Tariq Akmut, followed by Eric Brooks.
Good evening, members of the Waukesha Board of Education. I was just sitting there, and I noticed an irony. The background for your timer contains the colors of the rainbow. Maybe you have to change that. You know, Waukesha has suffered over the last few years a loss of teachers. It's more than just regular retirements. So which begs the question, why are teachers leaving? Is it that your policies contribute to this teacher exodus or what? And there are other school districts across the country who have taken actions similar to yours, and they're facing the same dilemma of not enough teachers. It's this idea of not being able to, or this ability of not being able to work with a diverse population. That is, that is really important. Any elected official represents all the people in that area, not just the people that voted for them. And that is not happening here. You know, every person, black, white, brown, straight, gay, transgender, all of them are people. If, for us religious people, they are God's children. Makes no difference what the color of their skin is, their sexual identity, or their gender. As a board, you should respect that, because that is what will help us maintain the achievements that this district had in the past, not that it becomes a hollow shell of its past. You know, there's been a lot said about woke. Woke is an adjective derived from the African-American vernacular English, meaning alert to racial prejudice and discrimination.
Thirty seconds.
And that applies across the board to any type of discrimination. So please, let us move in a good path, in a path of progress, not destruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Brooks, followed by Erica Kochansky.
Thank you, members of the board. I wanted to come here to talk about literacy today. I know a couple weeks ago, Governor Evers signed into law a bipartisan bill that would kind of shift the way that the state teaches literacy towards a more phonics-based approach, and I'm really excited about that. You know, right now in Wisconsin, around two-thirds of kids in fourth grade can't read at grade level. It's even worse for students of color. So I'm excited that we're taking this shift towards a more phonics-based approach, but I'm really excited because the board here in Waukesha's already done this. You didn't need the state to tell you that we needed to make this change. You recognize it, and I just wanted to thank you for your leadership on this issue. You know, the statistics are staggering when a kid can't read at third grade. I mean, they're more likely to drop out, they are far more likely to become incarcerated or on some form of government assistance in their life. I think it's around like 88% of kids who can't read by third grade don't graduate. 70% of people in the criminal justice system who are incarcerated can't read above a fourth grade reading level. It's about 85% of juvenile justice kids who, you know, they can't read at grade level. So this is something that's going to really benefit students here in Waukesha, especially students of color, especially students who have reading disabilities and undiagnosed reading disabilities. So just want to thank you for your leadership. I know the kids here are going to appreciate it, and I think our businesses here in the Waukesha community are going to appreciate it as well because they're really struggling to find qualified people out of high school to fill those jobs. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Erica Kochansky.
First, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak. I think the signage just needs to be improved a little bit because I was having trouble finding the room. Last week, I received an email stating that my daughter will be directly affected by the ballooning class sizes in our district's dual-language program. From what I understand, there will be 34 students in her third-grade classroom. Thirty-four eight- and nine-year-olds in one classroom, plus a teacher and at least one aide. That's 36 people in one room. To say I'm concerned is an understatement. While I'm worried about my daughter's ability to stay focused, get one-on-one attention when needed, and stay healthy when crammed in a room with that many people for five days each week, I'm especially scared for my daughter's classmates with IEPs and 504 plans. Many students with IEPs and 504 plans have sensory processing challenges. Teachers can do their very best to reduce visual distractions, background noise, and unpleasant smells. They can provide sensory accommodations like ear defenders, sunglasses, fidgets, and seating options. They can encourage movement and sensory breaks. But an educator's ability to do so depends on the number of students occupying their classroom. If the School District of Waukesha values its students with IEPs and 504 plans, it will strive to accommodate them in meaningful ways. It will recognize that the more students there are in a classroom, the more sensory stimuli students have to contend with. It will admit that the more students there are, the less time a teacher has to dedicate to each student. It will acknowledge that more sensory stimuli coupled with less support means more stress for students with IEPs and 504 plans. It will concede that the more stressed these students are, the more likely they will need to be pulled from the classroom. It will own that when children with IEPs and 504 plans need to be pulled from the general education classrooms because of preventable stress, IDEA, FAP, and LRE are not priorities. If our district values inclusion, it will find a way to keep both dual-language and monolingual class sizes small, because I understand that both dual and monolingual class sizes have grown quite a bit over the last couple of years. It will recognize that teachers serving students with IEPs and 504 plans need more time for specialized training and research, individualizing and differentiating instruction, providing one-on-one support, educating students about disabilities, communicating, collaborating, and meeting with special education staff and families, creating a classroom environment conducive to learning for students with unique sensory needs, implementing UDL, building trust and relationships with students with IEPs and 504 plans, and for self-care to avoid burnout, or we're going to lose more educators. Since I'm about up, I'll just kind of stop there, but we need to turn things around. What's happening right now is not working. We can't lose more educators. Thank you.
Thank you to all our speakers tonight. We'll move on to our minute approval. We have only one set of minutes tonight for your consideration, and that is from the July 19th, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Voight.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffery. Any discussion or questions, concerns? All right, Ms. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes 8-0. And I just wanted to interject, I neglected to do this when we did roll call, that Mr. Moore is excused for tonight. Thank you. All right, moving on to the, first, the WEF report given by Mr. Barowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So as you all know, the golf outing was last Thursday, August 3rd, at Ironwood Golf Course, and we don't have details on that yet, but I do know enough to say it was a great success overall. I believe there were 166 golfers, and on behalf of the WEF board, we just want to thank anybody who golfed or volunteered, who sponsored the event, maybe donated items or prizes. A lot of that was done from the people in this room, so again, the WEF just really appreciates all the support for the district, from the district and for the district. And in one way, I guess the event really isn't over yet because I just got an email this morning that there were six items that were not bid on in the silent auction. So there is a second chance auction that is going until midnight tomorrow night. So you got about 28 hours to bid on those six items. If you just download the Handbid app, you can, you can bid on those items. And two of them are sports memorabilia items. There is a buy-it-now price that is below market value, so any sports memorabilia fans out there can get something below market value, so take a look at that. So again, you can either download the Handbid app or contact Lynette Calmidge, and she'll help get you set up. Last thing I would mention is that the WEF is seeking board and committee members. So again, if you know anyone that's interested in serving that great organization, please, I guess, let me know, let Lynette Calmidge know, and we'll make the connection. The next meeting's going to be on Thursday, September 7th, and I'll be able to share more details on the event overall then at our next board meeting on September 13th. So, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. Now, communications. Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a few for the board this evening. We've learned that one of our counselors, Dr. Amanda Desoua, has been teaching a class this summer, Kids Managing Anger. It's a class for parents. She's teaching it through Parents Place and part of Waukesha County Services, helping parents learn strategies for helping children regulate emotions safely and with a sense of calm. So that's a wonderful community partnership by one of our staff members. We also had a nice showing at the fair this year from some students at Hawthorne Elementary School. This was the first year through the UW-Madison Extension, Waukesha County, that students at Hawthorne participated in an after-school 4H program. We had 72 students that participated in that program. Of those 72 kids, they had perfect attendance in every opportunity that they had to attend those sessions, and they had hundreds of exhibits on display at the Waukesha County Fair. So really a nice shout-out for Hawthorne. This is a really neat one. The American Volleyball Coaches Association recently announced their Club Awards for the Year, and our very own Joe Banskey, the varsity head coach for the Waukesha Fusion, which is the boys' co-op between North and South, was announced as the National Club Coach of the Year. He coaches the under-14 club volleyball in the summertime as well. So a really nice honor for Coach Banskey, who's going to be recognized at a luncheon in Tampa, Florida later this year. So congratulations to Joe. And then lastly, also our very own Adam McDonald. We've learned he's a teacher at South, and he's also the girls' golf coach for all of our high schools and the boys' golf coach for South High School. Qualified this summer for the Wisconsin State Open Championship. He's an avid golfer, a very good player. So we wish him very well. He's going to compete this summer from August 14th to the 16th at Century World, where the U.S. Senior Open was just held recently in Stevens Point. And so hopefully, he will continue to play at a very high level. So some staff members and some kids doing some pretty amazing things. So thank you, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. That's really exciting. All right. We are moving on to our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, I think we- our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, I think we have one gift tonight?
Yeah. West High School received five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars from Jay Steinke. The gift was donated to West Boosters, designated for the snowboard and lacrosse activities.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Your consent agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have any item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a moment. We do not have any expulsion panel actions for this evening. We do have several updates to policies and bylaws. Policy twenty-four thirty, district-sponsored clubs and activities. Policy twenty-four thirty-one, scholastic athletics and district activities. Policy eighty-four oh five, environmental health and safety program. Policy twenty-two ten, curriculum development. Policy twenty-two twenty, adoption of courses of study. Policy twenty-two twenty-one, special observances days. And policy fifty-three thirty, administration of medication and emergency care. If any board member wishes to have any of those items set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Borowski, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved six resignations and twenty-five new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and a denim was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended. And, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Back over to Dr. Seabert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We find ourselves here in the month of August somehow, and in just under one month, we will begin the school year with kids returning to us on Tuesday, September fifth. Between now and then, we have a number of back-to-school events. They've already started, as well as new teacher and new employee events. And it's really fair to say that few things rival the energy that accompanies the start of a new school year and that fresh start that it provides for everyone. And we try to maximize that to the greatest extent that we can. The month of August also allows our very talented custodial and maintenance crews to complete projects and to get our buildings gleaming for the return of kids and staff. So tonight, I wanted to really just personally thank Kyle McCarthy, Chad Caravoo, Darren, and all of the wonderful men and women who are and have been making our Lindholm and Randall moves so very successful. They've done just an amazing job, and they continue to do so, as well as taking care of all the buildings and making sure that everything is ready to roll come September. I also want to encourage all of our stakeholders that we have multiple weeks of summer left, and that we should all do our best to enjoy all of it that we can, because the school year is just around the corner, but there's plenty of time to enjoy the outdoors. And I know I speak for our cabinet and our administrative team, who's been meeting. We have our fourth of four meetings tomorrow, that we're all excited for a continuing productive August, enjoying some sunny summer days, and most importantly, welcoming back staff, kids, and families later this month and into the month of September. So with that, Dr. Piasik, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Seabert. All right. We're going to begin our committee reports, and we will start tonight with the Policy and Government Relations Committee presented by Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We had met here in the boardroom just the other evening on August seventh, and our agenda included four policy action items. We revised three of those policies and were approved by the committee on four-to-zero votes. They were included in the consent agenda this evening. Those were Policies twenty-four thirty, district-sponsored clubs and activities, twenty-four thirty-one, interscholastic athletics and district activities, and eighty-four oh five, environmental health and safety program. The fourth policy was eighty-eight hundred, which was religious and patriotic ceremonies and observances. That was tabled and will be brought back to the committee. In addition to those policy items, we discussed two discussion items in our government relations portion, the first of which was the state budget update. Governor Evers had signed the state budget on July fifth. K-12 education will receive aid that includes a change to the revenue limit. All districts will receive an additional three-hundred-and-twenty-five in revenue limit authority per pupil in fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five. And additionally, low-spending school districts will be allowed to increase their revenue limit authority to eleven-hundred per pupil. Our second discussion item was our legislative update. Governor Evers signed Assembly Bill three-twenty-one into law. It's known as Wisconsin Act Twenty now. It's related to updating our early literacy instruction. It creates an Office of Literacy to be known as the Wisconsin Reading Center at DPI, as well as a literacy coaching program. Any discussion on that? So that would conclude my report. Our next meeting will be here in the boardroom on October ninth.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zanobia. The next committee report is Finance and Facilities given by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, August ninth, in the boardroom. The agenda included one action item and three discussion items for consideration. The first action item was the review and approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four preliminary budget. The committee discussed the recommendation of the preliminary budget totaling two-hundred-and-twenty-two million, sixty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars in revenue, and two-hundred-and-nineteen million, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars in expenditures. The preliminary budget was based on the DPI's estimate as of July first and will be presented to the public at the budget hearing on September thirteenth at six-thirty PM prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. The final twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget and tax levy will be approved in late October. The committee approved the proposed budget as presented, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Any questions or discussion about the preliminary budget? Okay. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
The first discussion item was an update on the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Kurt Wheelhouse, School District of Waukesha's representative from Building Solutions, and members of our School District of Waukesha HVAC team, presented an update on the progress being made in updating our HVAC systems across the district. In December twenty-twenty-two, the board approved ten-point-three million of SER funding to make significant updates to many of the district buildings. The updates were broken into two phases across the district based on the timing and availability of the supply chain. The total cost of recent or already-approved HVAC upgrades since two thousand and eighteen is roughly twenty-one-point-eight million. The most common improvements to date are the conversion from June air furnaces to hot-water boilers. The boilers haven't expected forty-year-life versus a furnace with a twenty-year-life. The conversion to direct digital controls from pneumatics, which will provide an expected fifteen-percent energy savings. And several sites are scheduled to have electrical service upgrades in two thousand and twenty-four, which will support the new equipment, again, pending on the supply chain. The HVAC team is also in the process of developing the next phase of projects for the committee and board to consider, based on the RING and DU findings and maintenance staff input. Any questions? The second discussion item was the monthly budget report. The fiscal year concluded on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Revenue and expenditures continue to be within the budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well. And the last discussion item was the SER update. We have claimed and received two-point-nine million of our seven-point-one million SER II funds. The performance period for this grant ends September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have one-point-five million approved by DPI and another one-point-five million that has been submitted as a claim waiting for approval. We expect to fully expend our funds by the end of September two thousand and twenty-three. The next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September eleventh, at five-thirty PM in the boardroom. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. All right. Next committee is the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I will share the updates from that committee tonight. In addition to the three policies that we approved earlier in the consent agenda, we have two action items and three discussion items on the agenda for you tonight. The first action item is for the approval of the Three-Year Library Plan. The library media specialists have used the Future Ready Schools Framework from the Department of Public Instruction as a guide to develop the long-range plan for library services as required by Wisconsin Administrative Code P eighteen dot zero-two subsection two H. At last evening's Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, the Three-Year Library Plan was presented along with information on the Future Ready Schools Framework and details of the prioritization process and plan development. The plan was presented with concrete objectives for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the expectation to update the plan on an annual basis. After discussion and clarification, the Three-Year Library Plan, Library Media Plan, was approved by a vote of five-zero by the committee, and I would be looking for a motion for its approval this evening.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Any questions? All right. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero. The next action item for Teaching and Learning was approval of the UBDs for physical education, grades six through eight. The Physical Education Department has been working to update their Middle School UBDs, which stands for Understanding by Design, for implementation in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Physical education is required for all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and the courses incorporate the state of Wisconsin mandated health standards. On a vote of five-zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the UBDs for middle-school physical education as presented. The committee requests your board approval, and I'll be looking for a motion this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Koenig.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zanobia. Any questions? All right. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Our first discussion item tonight is the Hadfield Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, grant update. A requirement of the grant eligibility is to provide a board update twice a year on how the grant money is being utilized. Co-principals Mike Elliott and Brandy Hart met with the committee to talk about the strategies they used this year to include small class sizes in specific grades, teacher coaching, tutoring, and intense intervention. Hadfield reported significant successes with these strategies. Action steps to continue this success into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year were shared with the committee. The principals also shared successful strategies and updates on the first year as a new school community for the Hadfield hedgehogs. Any questions? I will just comment on this again. Like, I was just delighted to see not only the effort, the teamwork, but the progress. And I think at every grade level, be it reading or math, we saw significant progress, which was really exciting to see. Combination, which obviously is not just the result of curricular materials, obviously some really talented professionals in the classroom who made that happen. So it's wonderful. All right. The second discussion item is AP US Government and Politics Course Syllabus Update. The course syllabus was revised by a team of teachers this summer to align with the College Board's course framework using the new textbook that was adopted by the board this past June. This presentation introduced the board to the course syllabus, which will be brought back for final approval in October. Any questions about that? I'll keep going. The third discussion item was the High School Grade Point Average Update. High School GPA is one of the district's key performance indicators, or what we call KPIs in the area of Teaching and Learning. That was approved last August. The KPI states that eighty percent of students will attain a cumulative GPA of two-point-eight or higher when they graduate. Data from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year was reported this past February after the first semester, and the committee heard from North High School regarding their strategies around student achievement. Last night's report shared the GPA data at the conclusion of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year for the classes of twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-twenty-six. The committee was joined by Principal Pat from West High School and Principal DiMatto Cucci from South High School, who shared their student-focused strategies for using this information as part of the continuous improvement process for all students. As a reminder, the district KPI dashboard can be viewed on the district's public website. Any questions about that or comments? All right. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September fifth, the first day of school, at seven PM, following the Student Services meeting here in the boardroom at the Blair Administration Building. All right. Now, we will move on to the Student Services Committee, which will be presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee met on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The agenda included one policy action item, which was the revisions to Policy fifty-three thirty, Administration of Medicine and Emergency Care, which were approved at the committee and added to the consent agenda this evening. Our other item on the agenda was the presentation of the Annual Nursing Report. Beth Pepper, one of the three district nurses, presented the report. Among her highlighted items were the quantity of healthroom visits at each school and the health conditions treated. We currently have fifty-three students with diabetic needs. Diabetic management for our elementary students ranges from twenty to sixty minutes per visit. However, diabetic students' time in the healthrooms diminishes as they mature and manage their own needs. She also spoke about the creation of medical emergency response teams at each school to respond to sudden cardiac events. When our schools complete response drills, they will be designated as heart-safe schools. North and West High Schools obtained this designation during the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. South High School and the four middle schools will achieve this in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. The elementary schools will earn this designation in the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. All schools managed their own emergency response plans prior to this program. So this is basically bringing the entire district a standardized approach for medical response teams. Is there any questions on that? That was our only discussion information item. All right. Our next Student Services Committee meeting will be held September fifth at six PM in the boardroom. And Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? All right. Mr. Borowski, do you have an update for Human Services tonight?
We have no, yeah. We have no action or discussion items on this evening's agenda. Our next meeting is Wednesday, September thirteenth.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our committee reports for tonight. We're at the point in our agenda where we can consider recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items. Does anyone have any suggestions? Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you. I actually have two. A couple months ago, Mr. Zanobia, Zanobia had asked if we could get an update on our communications process, so internal, external. And I think that's an item that we need to review, what we are going to use as a communication policy going forward. The second item is that in absence of a technology committee, as I don't think they are necessary, I do think that there is a need for an annual update. I know that over the course of the summer, we've seen a tremendous amount of effort and work done on upgrades, transitions. I think we actually got rid of Global Connect, Global Protect, mixing. But I think it would be nice just for us to get an update as to changes and what we're doing on progress on the IT side.
Mrs. Kozlowski, can I just clarify? Because in the consolidation of some of our committee priorities, we moved the technology piece to Teaching and Learning, where I think we've taken up a lot of the student-based, application-related things. It sounds like you might be interested in more like the system level. Is that something we might consider as a Finance and Facilities conversation, or bring back to a general business? back to a general business? What level are you interested in targeting?
I think general business.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily looking at the overall cost as much as the improvement in the overall structure, infrastructure of the technology. And I think the parts that touch on Teaching and Learning will get brought up there as appropriate, because I will add those.
Does that make sense? Probably general business?
At the regular board?
That's what I'm thinking. We could talk about that, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Mrs. Voight?
There have been several comments about taking a look at the reason for the number of resignations and people leaving the district. And there's, would be a request to take a look at the exit interviews and to be able to address some of the common concerns, like too much heavy workload and some of the kinds of things that were, you know, shown there as a reason for leaving, that we can address those, you know, to try to improve our chance of retaining quality educators.
Okay. I think that would probably make sense for HR. Okay. Anything else? All right. We do have a need for executive session this evening, but only Item C. Is there someone who would like to lead the motion into executive session? Markel's not here to read for us tonight, so someone else is going to have to step up.
See only?
Barowski, yes, please.
All right. I'm moved to adjourn executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, personnel matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Diane Voight.
I'm recusing myself due to perceived conflict of interest.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.